Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Ida Campbell from WPFW Radio and also with the DC Legendary Musicians, and I want to bring on our esteemed leader and chairman of the DC Legendary Musicians, Ms. Sandra Butler Truesdale, actually, the right Reverend Dr. Sandra Butler Truesdale, who is chairperson of the DC Legendary Musicians. And if I can read the mission of the DC Legendary Musicians Incorporated, I will do that now. The DC Legendary Musicians' goal and mission is to preserve, protect, educate, and promote the artistic legacy and well-being of DC's professional musicians. Now, I welcome and bring on Ms. Sandra Butler Truesdale.
Thank you, Ida. I wanted to take this opportunity to, first of all, welcome Councilmember White in, as well as Aaron Myers and Chris Knone. And I just want to say just a little bit about them. And this is personal. They sent me their bios and all that. And when I read through them, I thought to myself, this does not, these are all great, but let me just touch on the relationship that I've had with each one of them. Aaron Myers, I met him maybe three or four years ago, and Aaron has also been a part of my book. He is a wonderful jazz singer. I heard him first at Westminster with Shirley the Settles. She called him up and asked him to sing. And not only that, he sings gospel and jazz and plays jazz and gospel piano. He is a wonderful person and a great person to support. And he works in with government and elected officials to make sure we get the right legislation that we need in order for us to assist our musicians, as well as Chris Knone. And actually, I met Chris Knone with, through Blair Ruble. They came to our meeting, he and his partner, to talk about funk parade. And then later on, he got married. He got married on me and had a baby and all that good stuff. And so now I became the grandmother to the baby, okay? So, anyway, I found these two young men to be great advocates for music, DC musicians and their music. So, now, Councilmember White, he is a native Washingtonian. And you all, everybody knows how I am about the native Washingtonians, us, the native Washingtonians. They say we're arrogant, and we think we're better, and that we do. Yes, we are arrogant, and yes, we do think we're better, okay? Even though we do take the time to welcome other people in and on our turf. But I particularly became, I would say, involved with Councilmember White because of his stand on the things that have to do with us in this city and keeping, and who is us, us black people, keeping us here in the city. And I also liked his position on education, as I served eight years on the DC Board of Education. I like his stand on education. I am going to also say that I had a discussion with him, and we've been discussing it now for maybe a couple or three years, about affordable housing for musicians in Washington DC. There are, there's a plethora of musicians who are native Washingtonians, professional musicians, and they are not able to live in their own hometown because they can't afford to. So, we've had that discussion, and we want to get that discussion started again, see if we can find some land that the District of Columbia is willing to give us, or sell it to us for a dollar, like my good friend, Mr. Mayor Barry, used to do for the churches, because we are nonprofit. Having said that, you know, I could go on and on, but I won't. Let me introduce you to Washington DC's great council member at large, Councilmember Robert White.
Well, thank you very, very much, Dr. Butler Truesdale. I'm always happy to be in communion with you, working with you, and want to also recognize, as you did, my friend Aaron Myers, who, you know, in addition, and people shouldn't take this for granted, he just recently won a Whammy Award for advocacy. And as you know, Dr. Butler Truesdale, as Christopher knows, as many people know, I don't sure you know this as well, advocacy in DC is a full-time job, and a thankless one, and one that generally doesn't pay. And so, it really is a focus on the greater good that, you know, gives me so much respect for Aaron, in addition to his musical talents, which, you know, on another personal note, as the pandemic really began, I'm a church boy. I love church. I love gospel music. And when the pandemic began, you know, we were all sort of in a difficult state. We still are, but it was new. And Aaron started about a year ago, he started doing gospel on Sunday, early afternoon, late morning. And it was something that really helped get me through. I would play it, you know, in the house. Sometimes I'd go take a walk with it, because I just needed to be by myself with some gospel music. And it meant a great deal to me to, you know, to see him use his talents in that way. But all of you really do this work of advocacy. And one important thing to mention is that, because a lot of people don't know this, council members can introduce bills, but whether or not legislation moves has a lot more to do with what's happening on the outside of the council than what's happening on the inside of the council. And so, it takes a lot of work. You know, just because you have a good idea, doesn't mean that anything is going to happen the next day. It takes a lot of work, a lot of churn, a lot of tilling to make something grow. And it often takes years to even really start to see anything bear fruit or even break ground. So, I want to recognize that most of the weight that gets carried is really carried by this community. And really want to note, you know, within the Wilson Building, a lot of the hard work is not done by the elected officials that you see, but by staff members, team members, like Angela Folks, who's on here, but I think her video is off now, so I want to recognize her and the rest of my office. This has been an incredibly difficult time for musicians and for music venues in DC, because folks all of a sudden lost most of their livelihoods. And this is something, and we've been sort of in a state of unknown for a year now, for a little more than a year now, where you don't know when things are going to open back up. And even when they do, you don't know how they're going to open back up. And we want to make sure that our venues and our musicians can last that long. So, we have taken some attempts at creating really a bridge for the arts community, for musicians, for venues. One of the first things we did back in October, and Aaron Myers and some of you all took the lead on this, was really a push for, I think at the time it was four and a half million dollars of forgivable loans to help artists and venues make it through the pandemic. And we sent, I sent along with six of my colleagues, I think, a letter to the mayor, asking her to create such a loan. Now, she didn't exactly do it that way, but we did eventually get a bridge loan that was, I think, $20 million. Still, you know, limitations that restrict the ability of musicians and even some venues to get some of that funding. So, we still had a long, long way to go. Now, of course, we did the Phase Two Live Entertainment Pilot Program to allow venues to start to open back up. But as most folks in, you know, the jazz community and some other communities know, with the social distance that was required in that, so they said, yeah, you can open up, but you can't have more than, you know, 50 people. And, you know, by the time you met all the restrictions, no small venue could really participate, no small venue could open. So, still, a lot of folks were really left in the cold. There is a proposal for, a proposed amendment for the Budget Support Act to require, no, I'm sorry, this is, let me not jump there yet. We've seen some other things. I had introduced and gotten passed a few years ago, another thing I worked with, with Aaron Myers, on the Performing Arts Promotion Amendment Act. As somebody who really, you know, in my young adult and adult years, loved going to Bohemian Caverns, HR57, many of our other venues now, Twins Jazz, my lord, the list goes on and on, all these venues, these particularly jazz venues that have closed. What I realize is, I can't, I can't make a new jazz venue, but maybe, and this is really coming, working with Aaron, maybe if we incentivize bars and restaurants to provide live music, maybe we then start to foster more avenues for our artists. Luckily, we got that through. It created a significant financial incentive for local bars and restaurants to open up their doors to live music. And in fact, we lowered the threshold a year or so ago, the number of days that they had to have live music, to really further incentivize folks to open up their space to live music. The other thing I want to mention is something that happened during the budget last year, and something I'm still working on. We do have a significant amount of money going to the arts in the city, but not a lot of that money is reaching, frankly, black artists and venues that cater to black artists, and to genres that have particularly deep roots in our city. So, Gogo is native to DC, but jazz is not unnative to DC. The history of jazz in DC is not that much shorter than the history of jazz in New Orleans. But we have not really dug in to protect our musicians and to really capitalize, create more opportunity from this, the way that New Orleans has. And that's something that's always hurt my heart. So, we have this organization of large arts organizations, and it's a coalition that receive without competition the majority of our arts funding. What I suggested during the budget last year was, we have to break that coalition up, because what was not included for most years, and now barely included, were programs run by African-American and Latino operators. And so, there was an equity problem there, and there still is an equity problem. But I am, I'm working on that. So, I love, love, love the larger organizations like the Shakespeare Theater, the Gay Men's Chorus. I love these organizations. I patronize these organizations. But they are larger than most other organizations because of the role of historical racism in every aspect, from financing to the arts to cultural appreciation. And so, I don't want to see us to really kind of build on discrimination with more discrimination. And I was not able to get enough support for my amendment, because, you know, frankly, equity is easy to talk about, but sometimes it's hard to do. And you gotta, you gotta be willing to piss some people off sometimes. And I think my colleagues weren't ready to do that last year, but we've continued to really plug away. So, what's in front of us now is still a significant challenge about how we right this ship, how we stabilize things here in DC for our arts community. And that's something that we have to work together to address in the budget. There has to be something in this budget that is a lifeline for artists and for venues to make sure you can survive, because as soon as the city says, go, venues can reopen, you all are ready. And so, the arts is a fundamental part of our recovery, as long as our artists and venues make it that long. And we have to be smart here. We have to make sure we are creating the bridge that we need, and really not just stopping there, but creating opportunities for expansion later, for more education, arts education in our schools. We also have in front of us the issue of buskers and amplified noise, which is another issue affecting many in the arts community. There's a bill to sort of limit that. And this has been a difficult issue for folks in the city, because there seems to have been an expansion of sort of outdoor, non-permitted performances. But cities change, right? Cultures change. And so, this didn't just start. It may be expanding, but it's expanding because we have more pedestrian traffic, because we have more people here. And that's not a bad thing. That's a good thing. You don't see folks running around New Orleans saying, you know, cut them horns down, you know, that's just not what happens, because it's, it's an environment that supports this growth. And what we have to do is support that growth. We do have to be sensitive to noise levels that may be out of control or not respectful of neighbors. But what we don't want to do is create an environment that is not welcoming to emerging artists, or, you know, that really involves police and things that frankly are not public safety issues. That is a danger that we see every day on the news, and sometimes too close to home, with police being involved and things they shouldn't be, and people who lose their lives tragically, like this young woman who had a knife. But this young woman was in crisis. This young woman had been bounced around and really needed help, not just then, that day. She needed help that day, but she needed help before then. And the response from the government was, we'll send the police. And what happened? This young lady is dead, and didn't need to be. And that's the reality, unfortunately. You don't have to be armed. You don't have to present a threat. So, we have to be mindful of that when we, when we look at enforcement. So, let me kind of stop there. You know, there's so much to say, but the message I really want to leave us with today is, we have to come together on a proposal to protect venues and artists, a proposal specific to COVID-19 and the recovery. And so, I am a member of the recovery, the COVID Recovery Special Committee. We haven't started setting hearings for it yet, but keep that on your radar. It's co-chaired by Vince Gray and Charles Allen. And I think you all kind of want to be maybe first in line to reach out to them as co-chairs and saying, hey, you gotta focus specifically on the arts in our economic recovery, in our recovery from COVID, because we have to map out a plan and fund that plan. So, know that you have a strong supporter here. I wasn't blessed enough to be an artist, and so, the best I can do now is support artists. But you all do have my complete support and respect, and I want to keep working on your behalf. So, I appreciate you including me in today's town hall, and I look forward to being a partner and an advocate with you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. I really appreciate your remarks. The only, I do have a question, and I'm not sure, you may have addressed it. I maybe missed it a little bit, because Blair Ruble was trying to come on and trying to help him out. But what, what is your opinion about the city council's commitment, not just yours, I know what yours is, but the city council as a whole? What is their commitment to the musicians and their music at this time? I have not seen, particularly when Grasso was there, I did not see the kind of commitment that I thought, you know, we should have, up to and including having arts and music in the majority of the schools. Now, I do know that we can't go back 70 years, when I was in school, but every school that I ever went to had a music and art program. And of course, we did not have the kind of money or funding that they have at this time. So, where do you see the council at this time?
I would say, you know, commitment unfortunately is an ambiguous term, right? Because you can say you're committed, but that is easier and different than doing something about it, particularly when it's, when it's hard to do. So, I would say that there is some commitment from the council to the arts and the arts in education. What I think the council probably needs is more, more specific recommendations and kind of how we do this. And that is something that I think is ripe, because there are organizations, you all know more than I do, but I have a friend, Andrew, who started a program called DC Strings. And he's, you know, classically trained, but, you know, his philosophy is music is music. I just want to see children of color playing. But he is having an incredible time just getting stable funding from the city. And as you all know, it's harder and harder to find opportunities to teach music in our schools every year. That's a loss to our city, to our culture, to the possibility of development for these young people whose minds are ripe. And so, I do think that music has to be, again, woven deeply into our schools. So, we're so far off the mark now. And I think what we need to do is create a roadmap back to a place where arts education is available to any student in our public school who wants to avail themselves for free.
And I totally agree with you, because it is also, as you said, it is a part of our being. And the arts and the music mix up almost 40% of what we actually become in the end, because it does a lot of things for you, up to and including focus you on a subject or anything that, you know, it's just something that I love. And actually, you know, I'm not a musician and cannot sing anymore. So, I used to sing when I was sitting in front of Marvin Gaye, and he was singing Boy Soprano. I thought I could sing then. What I'm going to do, because I know you have to jump off, I want to give Aaron and Chris the opportunity to speak to you. And so, why don't, Aaron, why don't you speak to the council member first, or ask what, any questions that you have?
Thank you very much, and it's so good to have you with us, Robert, and thank you for the opportunity to have this particular conversation. And I echo everything that the council, council member, there's a few things, and I know Chris can really touch up on really the other of amplified music issue. It's two legs to that particular issue. One, proposed solution that was proposed by Chairman Mendelson, but we've also countered that with also the harmonious living legislation that Christopher has worked tirelessly with Brandon Doe's office with. I believe you've signed on to it also, council member. Regarding the Music Venue Relief Act, we're, if we can get about that same amount of money included in the upcoming budget too, so that we can, as we go into the budget season, we can know come October, November, December, these venues may have a lifeline they can depend on, being that we're not understanding the, if they will be open and to what capacity they'll be open. Outside of what we've been doing from the DMV music stakeholders, bringing together a coalition of artists and people of the ecosystem from all over that the council member has also been on, there is one question I would have to him, but then also a statement that I hope that the general population, something that he did state, is that, you know, none of the legislation that you, Dr. Truesdale, Chris, myself, any of us work on can happen without the public pressure. So, I'm hoping that the members of the DC Legendary Musicians, the people who do see this, will actually, you know, put pen to paper, typing emails, reaching out to their council members to support all of these issues in which we were discussing and talking about. So, it may give the council members who support us, like Robert White, the support they need to actually push this legislation to over the threshold. But the two other issues, unemployment for artists will be running out in September, we understand. And there's going to be, there's going to be a lifeline that's going to be needed for musicians and artists at that time, because they won't be back. And I know San Francisco has done a pilot program of the minimum artist income, minimum income of like $1,000 a month. We did have a music census, so we do have an idea, at least for those full-time and part-time artists here in Washington DC, as far as the number to be able to score something like that. But what, have you, have you heard of any measures of what's going to happen to unemployment for artists after September?
Excuse me, great, great question. I have not heard. And one sort of kind of good thing is that every part of the country is feeling the same strain. And so, what we've seen is the pressure from lawmakers across the country, particularly national lawmakers, result in continued extensions of unemployment benefits. And we've not been the best at getting those out the door in DC. I'm co-chairing a hearing on that a couple of weeks with Councilmember Silverman. But to the extent that if unemployment is not extended for artists, and we are not reopened at or near capacity, then I think we have no choice but to create some type of income supplement for, for our artists and others who are not able to return to work because of COVID. My hope, though, is that by September, we will be in a vastly different place than we are now. If you think back, just, you know, it's April, two months ago in February, we were nowhere close to where we are now. You know, it was barely anyone was getting vaccinated. All the vaccination sites were a mess. Now, we have more, most jurisdictions have more vaccinations than people who want to get vaccinated. So, things are changing day by day, week by week. And my hope is that by September, we'll be in a very different place.
And then the, I think the last part of that, as far as the health and how people are opening up, I know music stakeholders and Dr. Truesdale, we really wanted to understand the science model. This is really somebody who's, she seems to be trying to follow as many models as possible. I understand the council and the mayor may not be communicating every week as they once did, as far as how the recovery, science-wise, DC Health is concerned. However, for music, is there a way, or is there something that we could do as far as making sure that we're working from the same knowledge bank, the same science model, so that we can start creating thresholds, benchmarks, or something like that, so that we are all working toward the same particular goal timeline-wise? We don't know, for instance, you mentioned the pilot program, and you saw how they cut out all the small businesses, the small jazz clubs specifically. But we don't understand the science model or the peer, any studies they're using to base those structures upon, the 20 feet from the stage for instrumentals, 30 feet from the stage for vocalist, and then the six feet apart, especially in the time of people who are being vaccinated. There's a scenario now where we're having a lot of clubs who are trying to propose maybe a vaccine passport, so that if you want to come to enjoy the music, you can show that you've been vaccinated, the band, the staff has been vaccinated. Do those rules still apply in those scenarios? And would it, and if they are applicable, what science is that based upon? Have you heard of any of the science models, or would that be something the council on a whole would have to have a hearing, or the new recovery work group that you just mentioned? Is that something that we should really focus, ask them to kind of take focus on, so that we're, we've created a clear bridge of communication between DC Health and the artist community?
Here's what I think we should do on that. So, the council has also had difficulty getting a clear understanding of exactly what model and models DC Health is using. So, DC Health makes all the determinations about reopening and changes to reopening and closing. But, you know, not surprisingly, the models that they use change over time, as we start to sort of get smarter about COVID, or different CDC recommendations. But we have gotten to a point, and we got to this point some time ago, whereas it is completely unclear from the public, the council, artists, the reasoning behind the steps that we are taking. So, it is very difficult to track. So, here's what I would recommend here. If you all would work with smaller venues to either on a set of questions or on a proposal, I will be, my office will be sort of your, not just your advocate, but your intermediary with DC Health. And then we will also kind of create a bridge. So, we will work together to get answers to the questions or to the proposal. But we'll also work to identify somebody at DC Health and somebody from the arts community who can communicate without a whole lot of noise or politics. So, if I can kind of help you get an initial answer, and then pull back so that they don't see any politics in it, I think that would be the best, best path forward.
Thank you. I want to go to Chris. Now, I appreciate, Robert, thank you for, I know we we didn't, we, nothing really was planned. And as you, I asked my questions based on what you actually said. You kind of touched on everything that I thought of beforehand. So you're good studying, you and you love music and that that helps a great deal when we're talking about this because it's, if you like the music and you're empathetic toward the plight of the humanity within music, it helps shape some of how you 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 do your policy. So I'm glad that you were able to uh help us with those those two situations. Chris?
Yeah, thank you, council member. I know you need to jump off and and I just want, I echo everything that Aaron has said and and um I really, as someone who has done advocacy work with Aaron in D C for over three or four years now, and we started this coalition this this past year, um just every single step of the way, you have been the go-to council member. Uh you know, and 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 just your ability to understand, you know, the need for arts and how arts plays such a bigger role in everything else in the city and how it touches on so many other important, it touches on education. It touches on, you you know, it's 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 employment, it's it's so many different parts. It's um it's stability and growth, you know, of the people. And 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 you, with the legislation you put forward for the for the uh I'm blanking on name, but the but the the legislation for the small jazz venues and, you know, support for funding and support for the the bridge loan um really shows that I think you, more than many other on the council and in the administration, really understand um how integral it is to connect the the music community with you know, these different parts of the city. And and I want to say to your, to your idea about the proposal about uh bringing the voices of small venues, it's something we're actually working on. We've been doing so many things that committee, our guidelines, our list of guidelines is something that we should be putting out in the next couple of weeks, which is coming from talking to these small venues and getting a set of proposals we'd love to put forward or questions, like you said, that we'd love to pose to the to the health community, uh or to that, to the, to the, to D C Health. Um as aside from that, I mean, our biggest thing right now is music touches on everything. It touches on policy in uh transportation, in, you know, like in health, in education. And 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 uh and we have proposed not only funding for venues, but we've been very vocal in saying that like music is reopening, artists need funds to just perform out on the street. I mean, you know, yes, we're working on amplify, yes, we're working on combating amplified noise. We've put forward legislation that we feel is comfortable and we've we've worked on harmonious living, which is gonna prevent hopefully further disturbances due to, you know, poor planning, poor planning and poor development that hasn't been soundproofed. But but you know, we've also proposed funding for musicians for more street performance while venues can't open. Funding for vet, for some festivals that are gonna happen in the, in the, in the fall to get people out there because no one had made made it, had any funding coming in last year. So there's gonna be additional costs for uh you know, uh P P E and for just, you know, whatever else you need, you know, to keep people distant and safe. And so um that's something that we really want to make sure that it's on, you know, the council's radar right now. Uh because there are funds that can be allocated even before we go into the budget cycle. Um at this, at this moment, that can help musicians now in this transit, very important transition phase that we're, that we're in. And I really don't, I I'm gonna stop it there because I know you you need to leave soon. Um I could talk for hours about all the things we're working on. Um but but I'm just glad you're such a supporter.
All right, absolutely. Well, I I appreciate it and happy to be a supporter um and 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 really want to, you know, um make sure you all can can stay. Um and and I I'm sympathetic, you know, not only do I love the music, but but as as Aaron said, I'm I'm sympathetic to the plight. Um and um, you know, so I want to help just just as, you know, person to person. Uh that that is is what we have to do. So um so happy to be a partner in this and we we will keep pushing together.
How could we best help you and help, as you mentioned earlier, that, you know, keeping, you know, the, reaching out to your council member, but but how can we best help those advocates and the champions we do have on the ca- on the council? What what is the best use of our resources and our rallying efforts? How can we best rally the people and is there a a most effective way we need to channel our people? The human equity to support the projects in which you're you're working on?
Good, great question. So uh a couple of things. One, one is specificity. So uh it it is, council members are are inundated every day with hundreds of people telling us what their problems are. Um and when we get a problem, that means we have to start trying to figure out solutions and then try to get support for the solution. But it, when people come to us with proposed solutions that we can look at and we sort of agreed, yes, this solution can work and the advocacy is around a particular solution. Um you, we need the council to do this thing. That is effective. That's very effective. Um so so the, continue to work to develop ideas, work with us because, you know, we will talk you through sort of the 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 political and legislative viability. Uh but when when there are solutions, uh that's where you need to advocate a a route. But then make sure your members are are uh reaching out to and touching all offices. Because, you know, you need multiple council members to support. So, you know, it's it's great to have a champion or two champions, but you need seven votes to get anything passed. So uh you need at least seven, but you 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 better, the closer to thirteen you get, the the better off you are. Um so so really just making sure those efforts are are coordinated and reaching all council members.
Thank you. That's all I have, Dr. Choudhury.
And um council member White, I I I do want to take this opportunity to thank you for taking up uh your busy time. And on a Saturday, having been in the politics field for eight years, well, maybe more than that, fifteen maybe, uh I realize how important your weekends are to you. Because we, as the, you you know, your constituents, we don't even think about that. We think about, you know, he's he's our council member and we can call him anytime.
And and you can. Uh I I just got back from tennis practice with my uh my oldest daughter. And as soon as I hang up with you, I gotta get back to re- rereading the comprehensive plan. So I I appreciate it and yeah, we, yeah, very happy to.
Once again, uh I I do want to thank you and 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 thank Aaron and Chris for uh their input and and those wonderful questions and comments that they made. But I also um want to ask you and through your office, I will, maybe in another sixty days, we can have another town hall meeting and, you know, see how far we've gotten and how we paid attention to the recommendations that you've made to us, uh you know, and just sort of kind of come round circle uh and see what are our next steps. Uh once again, I I want you to know, homeboy. I I really, really, really uh appreciate your time, your efforts and your commitment. So I'm not gonna hold you not one minute longer unless someone else has something they want to say to you. And and God bless you, stay safe. And I'm gonna tell you like I I told the young man from your office, the fight is not over. And I tell all of the black men that I know that it's not over. And and you all be careful, watch your front, your your left and your right, and turn around every now and then and watch your back. So have a wonderful.
If I may, I have, that was really good, Sandra. I just have a quick um thing to ask. Is there um, I'm just getting back to living back in D C. My question is, do, is there any type of comprehensive plan for D C? Where it shows what areas they're going to be rebuilding in? What they have zoned, planned for each um zone, you know, each uh area of the city?
This is literally the document I've been reading for two days and I'm not even a quarter of the way through it. Um so so yes, it's called the Comprehensive Plan. Uh it is what we are working on uh right now. And the major flaw in the plan is is that I think there's there's not enough focus uh on equity or or affordable housing because again, equity comes at a cost, right? So you you can't have uh both a a a city with more housing and a city that says, we don't want any neighborhood to look different than it does now. Those two things are in competition. So you have to really start to think about what your priorities are and which one is 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 more important to protect. So uh that's what the Comprehensive Plan does. And that's one of the reasons I'm spending so much time on it. Uh because I I think it's just not, I think not exactly where we need it to be.
Look, just one other thing. Will there be a map that designates and shows what areas the city plans to rebuild in, like over there by R F K? Um and other areas in the city that they have vacant land?
Yes, um the city in in this comprehensive plan is divided into uh eleven uh kind of neighborhoods or jurisdictions. Um and they're they're called elements. I don't know why they're called elements, but but it's divided into eleven elements. Um and it includes every kind of part of the city. Within each element, you kind of break it down to smaller uh what are called small area plans. Uh and these plans are done with community input. Um it through the Office on Zoning. So some areas already have a small area plan, but somewhere like R F K where we haven't yet yet built, does not have a small area plan. But um you know, the debate about a place like R F K, you know, I'd say, I, look, I grew up as a Washington uh football uh fan. I'm a huge fan. But do we, and I would love for them to be in the city, but we only have so much room. And so wh- what's more important, having a football team here that's gonna play eight home games a year or having more housing for, you know, people with low and moderate income housing? You know, we gotta make these choices. And so um you know, R F K is another one of those places where, yeah, I'm saying we 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 need more housing.
Well, once again, um let me, let me thank you again and and thank Ida, Michael, who is our engineer and a great jazz uh pianist, uh and and Chris and um Chris and and um Aaron, so much for your input. And we will get back to you, of course you know that, all right?
I do, I do.
We will, we will get back to you and and enjoy, enjoy your family uh today. And kiss those girls for me.
I will indeed.
How about that?
I will indeed. Well, thank you all so much. I enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra, I mean, we, I mean, I'm happy, you know, to follow up on that. And and I know that Ida said, you know, we we can, we can talk more about sort of what's in the works because what what Ida's talking about is what we talk about every single day. When a new issue comes up, whether it's housing, affordable housing for artists, or whether it's designing outdoor spaces that can accommodate performance. Or whether it's making sure that if you're building commercial and you're gonna have space for, you know, I I I I can get into so many little details, but commercial spaces, they're gonna have performance. You've got to make sure that the traffic allows for zoning for artists to load their gear in. I mean, there's every single part of city planning, and we say this on every single call. Every single part of city planning can be benefited by the input of creatives and the creatives and musicians. Because it's, one, these, these people who generally do this work think within a very square box. And they don't have the ability to pull in, you know, uh insight from from other people and other communities. So they continue to do the same thing. They continue. That that's why I, you know, love, love a neighborhood like the Wharf or something like that. But you could, you could take that community and plop it down in any city in America, right? Because that's essentially what happens when we're in the phase of everyone's shared ideas. You're using like what this guy's doing here, this guy's doing there. When we talk about city policy and planning from a music standpoint in D C, the thing we focus on the most is that what we need to propose is unique to D C. Because D C's population, D C's artists require a a like a different proposal than what's happening in Seattle or wherever or and 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 just for that exact reason, because the community is so unique and diverse and specific. Our input, our input in every single part of city plan, art, and I'm not a musician, the music community input, but I but I work with the music community. The, but the music community and the creatives' input in every single part of the planning process can provide for more inclusive opportunities for everyone and more unique opportunities, more creative, more distinctly D C opportunities. And so, you know, I don't want to keep on, you know, knocking this home, and I didn't want to waste the council member's time, but like this is really, I mean, every single day we come up with something that that, you know, where we talk about this and how, wow, had they only consulted us, you know, before this is something and they didn't even realize that what they propose touches on the music community. That's the other thing. Uh so so it's it's just, it's really our focus and Aaron and my focus for the past, I mean, many years, but specifically this past year, when we've started these DMV music coalition, is just to, is just to get input and 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 bring ideas that come from the community to the table and then find ways to relay those and educate elected official council members, administration members about, about how input from the music community is important in those areas.
Uh thank you for that uh for that, Chris. Uh let me, let me, uh one of the things that I was thinking about uh as this was going on, um is is trying to pull the music community itself together. Because it's very difficult uh for us to, not just to get one genre together, but to get all genres together to talk about or to work on uh some of the things that we talked about or are working to try to make become a reality in uh the meetings that we have. And what I, what I was thinking is um there's a, there's a large number of R and B musicians in Washington, D C proper. And I, and not just that, the jazz musicians. Listen, I started to working on this and publicizing it when you first, when I first approached uh you and Aaron in the meeting to see if you thought it was okay. And that's been almost two months of PSAs and 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 W P F W uh programmers, um you know, talking about this. Um doing uh marketing it and yet we have not been able to touch music community so that they thought it was important enough for them to be on here and to hear and maybe participate. So that's another thing because we do know, Chris, is that the numbers count.
Y- yes, so.
I was on.
Sorry.
Get a, get a commission.
Yeah, yeah.
But what I've experienced, and I experienced this some in Hollywood too. Um you know, the first, the first um issue that I tried to bring forth to the N double A C P when I lived in Los Angeles was the fact that there seemed to be racism when it came to the clubs on Hollywood Boulevard uh on how we either promoted clubs, how we were treated in clubs, and then some of the policies as far as playing, I mean. But when I got ready to, you know, I did approach the uh N double A C P uh in in Hollywood, I was told to go and reach out to the chapter that was in Long Beach. Because they just wanted to focus on the image awards. Uh they didn't want to focus on the actual issues that were two doors down from their office, literally. Um and it showed me in that moment where if you do not have a strong official advocacy face in Washington, D C, I am now a union member, but that union is supposed to be that official advocacy space that is pulling all elements of the music community together. Okay, when that entity is there, but it is not fully operating in that capacity, it then forces organizations like what you do, Dr. Truesdale, what Chris has done, what I have done, to try to figure out how to give the information that we have to the folks that we know so that we can better help them to help themselves as far as to help each other as a collective group. What we've done with the DMV music stakeholders and the sustaining piece that we've done over the year is the only time to my knowledge where you've had multiple facets of a music ecosystem coming together uh on a consistent basis. Still, though, there is a massive distrust most musicians have against the, against the government. And that distrust is justified. It's justified because they've not seen the focus of uh music in schools. You've not seen the focus of uh music in an infras- infrastructure. You've not seen the focus of uh music in the legislation, as Chris has just noted, and what's been passed. And when musicians are trying to survive, they're trying to, they're playing gigs because they love the music, but also they want to pay the rent. So when you're focused on trying to make sure you're gonna put together a fantastic show so that you can be called back again to play again, and so that your band can remain inspired and so that you can make the money you need to survive and to eat and to come back again, you often are not focused on the one entity that's left you out in every other facet that you've had interaction with them with. And as advocates, I believe we have to just not just accept that it's our job to coalesce them in a way where they are part of wins as much as possible. Like when the legislation that Robert got passed that we worked on, Chris, it was awesome when we. When we did the, when we did the hearing and Chris and yourself pulled all of those people in to have that meeting with Jack Evans. And then they passed the bill and it became law, and then they funded it so that it was a law that was funded. Chris now can go back to that community and they listen and respond because they were a part of a win.
Yeah, and I think, I think further, I think further, what Aaron's also getting at is that I don't think that, look, we have, our, our stakeholder has what, four hundred, three hundred and fifty members? And those are the, those are the active advocates in the community. How many people show up to call regularly? Twenty-five, maybe, right? So, so so it's just like, I I don't, I don't blame any one person for not coming in. I mean, you plug in when you can, but we get the email. I mean, you know, people get the emails, like they can't make it all the time. You know, I also think like you plug in when you can. If it's, e- everyone can't care about every issue, but they can plug into the issues. So and I think we've had success and and you know, town halls and stuff like that and any given week's call, I I I.